Welcome, everyone, to the Tuesday, October 15th, 2024 Board of Education Meeting. We have all trustees present, plus all four of our student reps. We begin our meetings with the Pledge of Allegiance, if you'd like to stand and join me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we begin with Student Spotlight. All right, thank you, Mr. Schmidt, and again, welcome to the audience. It's my pleasure to have Mr. Butcher to the podium. As we begin this evening with our Student Spotlight, where we recognize the talents and achievements of students in the TSD Creative Guild. Tonight, we're excited to shine a spotlight on an Athens senior, Macy Justice, and learn more about her journey as a filmmaker. Mr. Butcher, take it away.
Thank you, Dr. Macheski, and good evening, board members. I'm excited to introduce you to Macy Justice, a senior at Athens High School. It feels like just yesterday when I first met Macy when she was only a freshman. There was a lot of enthusiasm for video, and the reason why Macy is Student Spotlight tonight is so we can hear her story and celebrate her. I always like to remind students I work with that each of them are on their own unique path. Life is not a competition, and you should never compare yourself to other people. When Macy first started, she decided she wasn't ready for video yet, and instead focused on photography. Through this work, I saw she had an eye for capturing wonderful moments. She did collaborate as the advert on a Drumline video, which we'll see in a moment, and eventually, very recently. She tackled her first solo video project with Creative Guild for Athens Homecoming. Those first steps are the most difficult, and I'm very proud of her for taking this step early in her senior year. So let's take a look at some of her work. We have a slideshow of some photography work. This is some of the early stuff at a volleyball game. She captured some swim events.
That's a nice picture.
That's a great picture.
The tree lighting featuring the Athens Choir.
That's a great picture, too.
This is the IA East Senior Art Show. And this is last year's Athens Homecoming. Some stunning photos in here. I love all of these. And this was Troy High's homecoming last year.
You took that picture, huh?
What I remember about this homecoming was that it started to rain fairly early in the football game, and I had made a joke to Macy that if you want, I can hold the umbrella over you with the camera so you can keep taking pictures. And then she actually had me do it. We got some middle school basketball. So Macy's gotten around a few different things. She did the tree lighting again two years in a row. And even figure skating, we have a united figure skating team, and she captured some stuff for that. So Macy's done some wonderful work, as you can see, and she's a photographer who loves to have her picture taken. When I told Macy that she did a wonderful job with the homecoming video, she said that she didn't believe me. So I hope after this, she will. And I hope it's the first of many. Editing is so much more than just putting clips back to back. It's about finding those moments, finding the energy and the feeling behind it. And you have such a great intuition for that. And like I said, I'm looking forward to more work from you, Macy Justice. So at this time, we're going to open any potential comments and questions from the board, but first, if you'd like to say a few words, it's up to you.
I think, Mr. Butcher, for all the opportunities and opportunities to, like, do all this stuff, because, like, maybe five years ago, I would have never imagined doing any of this, and I've always dreamed of doing, like, photography and, like, helping out the school district in, like, cool ways. So I think, Mr. Butcher.
So I wanted to compliment you on the way that you set up your music in your video, like, matching the, you did a really nice job with the images and the music. You did a nice sequence. I know that takes a lot of, a lot of work and time. So, good job. What is something that you're hoping to tackle as you think about events that happen in your senior year? What's one that you hope to be able to capture?
I'm hoping to do something more personal, like a project myself, like a short film, maybe. Like, I'd like to do something that combines, like, my photography, my filming, and, like, something, like, personal as well. Because I know most of these are school events, I'd like to add my interest into it.
Awesome. Look forward to seeing you.
Good. A lot of questions. Go ahead.
Yeah, so I know that taking a first step in anything can be really difficult. So what advice would you give to a younger student or even a senior who is a little bit hesitant to take that first step in their creative journey?
I'm still trying to figure this out. Like, it took me this long to actually do a video of myself, so I'm trying to figure that out. But I'd say having, I mean, this has been, like, a really big support to me. So even if I'm like, oh, I'm not so sure, just, he's like, just try it. So just, basically, just putting yourself out there, just even if you don't feel that great, just, like, just show up. Just show up, and you might feel better over time. And just, even just, like, the bare minimum, just, like, trying, like, the effort is, like, already a lot. So I'm trying to get there myself.
Do you have any family here that you'd like to introduce?
I have my mom here and my little sister.
Hi, there. Welcome.
I thank my mom and my dad for driving me to events like this. It's, like, nine, and, like, students are, like, rushing out of places based on these events, so, like, I thank them for showing.
Okay, I loved the Drumline. How many cameras were you running for that?
It was, like, five, four.
That's what I thought. I kept looking at difference, like, four or five. And how long did it take to edit that? Because the editing was flawless. The music was absolutely fluid all the way through, and I thought, there's a lot of work in this. And it looks like it's just sort of happening, but I realized you've got to splice all that together. How long did it take you to edit that stretch?
Um, well, the, like, maybe a couple hours, because I had help. I wasn't fully, like, because this sort of, that was my first video, so I did have to, so, like, a couple hours.
Well, the end product was phenomenal. Absolute phenomenal. Go ahead.
I just wanted to comment, I, maybe because I am an amateur photographer myself, the lighting, you know, that you captured on, you know, many of the shots of students that were participating in sports was really exquisite. I mean, you've got great facial expressions, you've got lighting that made it come to life and be very dramatic. Do you see yourself, I mean, you are a very good photographer. Do you see yourself continuing with photography or maybe going in a career direction that might allow you to utilize your photographic skills?
Um, I personally want to keep my photography as, like, a hobby and keep it close to me. I feel like with work, sometimes you can get burned out, and, like, I just want to keep that, like, specialty.
Good and not cool.
Sports, by the way, I don't know what I'm doing half the time. That means a lot to me. I don't know what's happening in the sport, so, thank you.
It's the facial expressions and the depth of field, your phenomenal depth of field there, your aperture. It was amazing. It was really good stuff.
Thank you.
We're not just saying that. It's really good stuff. It really is. I think we have a certificate. We do, yes. And if Mom wants to come get a picture, it'd be great. Okay, next on recognition is our mission moment, Learning Disabilities Awareness Month. Resolution, national associations for a number of different learning differences have each declared October as an awareness month, including associations for dyslexia, attention deficit hyperactivity disorder, and Down syndrome. To honor and magnify these efforts, the U.S. Department of Education has declared October as Learning Disabilities Dyslexia Attention Deficit Hyperactivity Disorder Down Syndrome Awareness Month. And Michigan Governor Whitmer has provided a more encompassing definition and declared October as Learning Disabilities Month. To that end, the Board of Education would like to join the governor with our own resolution. It would be appropriate this time to consider the resolution. Thank you. Dr. Wilson.
Whereas, the term "learning disabilities" refers to differences in how our brains work, which may affect the acquisition, organization, retention, understanding, or use of verbal and nonverbal information. And whereas, learning disabilities range in severity and may impact the acquisition and use of oral language, reading, written language, and mathematics. And whereas, one in five individuals have a learning disability. And whereas, learning disabilities may coexist with other disabilities and conditions, and they can affect individuals regardless of race, gender, sexual orientation, and other intersecting factors. Whereas, disabilities are a natural part of human diversity, but individuals with learning disabilities may face discrimination or marginalization based on their disability and other intersecting factors. Whereas, every person has strengths, and learning disabilities should not keep individuals from realizing their full potential in school, at work, or home, and as members of the family and their community. And whereas, specialized assessments and interventions involving homeschool, community, and workplace settings can significantly enhance the quality of life for individuals with learning disabilities. And whereas, by creating an environment with the appropriate supports and services, individuals with learning disabilities can achieve their goals, make meaningful contributions to their community, and participate fully in society. And whereas, understanding and celebrating the unique abilities and perspectives of individuals with learning disabilities is essential to creating an inclusive society that embraces the strengths and potential of all Michigan residents. So now, therefore, the Troy School District Board of Education joins Governor Gretchen Whitmer in commemorating October 24th as Learning Disabilities Month in Michigan. Support.
Thank you. Resolution by Dr. Wilson, supported by Dr. Philip Hart. Does anyone have any comments regarding this? Commentary? Yeah. It's a lot of whereses, but I think ultimately what it says is, I think this resolution says that we value all the members of our learning community, and we celebrate all the members of our learning community. And I really like that. It's a very long name for the, I prefer the Learning Disabilities Awareness Month, given all the other ones in there, but I'm glad that we were able to do this again this year. Any other commentary? I've seen none. All those in favor, please say yes. Yes, opposed, say no. Thank you. Resolution passes. Okay, and that moves us to Principals Appreciation Month. I'm taking this one, right? This is mine. Okay, so throughout the state of Michigan, October has, not only is it Disabilities, Learning Disabilities Awareness Month, it's also Principal Appreciation Month. Throughout the state of Michigan, October has traditionally been celebrated as Principal Appreciation Month in recognition of the outstanding work of our building-level educational leaders. In Troy, we're fortunate to have an exemplary group of principals dedicated to the success of every student in the district. This evening, we'll pass a resolution to commend our elementary and secondary principals for their exceptional commitment to excellence in the Troy School District. And, you know, I read this every October, and it just, to me, it falls flat when I think about the individuals we have in our district who are principals. They are just phenomenal, outstanding people who really care about our staff, they care about our kids, and they work really hard. So I'm happy that we're able to offer them some kind of recognition. May I have a resolution, please? Ms. Alish?
Whereas, energetic and inspiring school leadership is essential if teachers, schools, and districts are to ensure that all Troy students are college and career-ready. And whereas, K-12 school principals play a vital role in the success of students and act as liaison between the school and the community it serves, ensuring that parents and the community are aware of student and school achievement. And whereas, the Troy School District Principals are dedicated quality educational professionals committed to providing sound leadership and guidance to their staff and students. And whereas, during this month, we join educators, parents, and students throughout Michigan to raise awareness of the importance of educational leadership and to recognize and thank all principals working in Troy for their exemplary service. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Troy Board of Education officially recognizes October as Principal Appreciation Month in Troy and thanks our dedicated building leaders for all they do for our students and staff.
Support. Thank you. Resolution by Ms. Alish, supported by Mr. Haft. Are there any comments or commentary on this? Go ahead, Dr. Wilson.
I just wanted to add, thank you to our principals for the way that they really do interact with our families. It's like this simple line of, like, that they're a liaison between the cabinet and the community, but they, they really do engage with our community in a really meaningful way, and I'm thankful for our principals for doing that.
Okay. Any other commentary, comments? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say yes. Yes, opposed, say no. Thank you. Resolution passes. Next on recognition is the 2024 National School Public Relations Association, aka NSBR, awards. We would like to recognize the Troy School District Communications Department this evening. Could all the members from the Communications Department, please, come forward? I know there's at least three of you here, so. We are thrilled to share that the communications team received 11 national awards this year: six awards of excellence, four awards of merit, and one honorable mention through the National School Public Relations Association National School Communications Awards. They were recognized, in just a moment, Ms. Montanti's going to share all of those recognitions, but if you would, Ms. Montanti, introduce your team. Share the awards with us.
Under Montani, obviously. Thomas Butcher, as you know, and Adam Burns. We are missing a few this evening. Melissa Verdun is taking care of ailing parents this evening. Diana Urbaina is also dealing with family matters this evening, and Linda Alfonso is off today, so we're missing a few of our members, but thank you. We are excited and thrilled that we won awards of excellence for Troy Union at a Glance Infographic, Elevating Voices in Comfortably Uncomfortable Conversations Podcast, Discover Kitchen Cook-Off Video, Positive Behavior Incentive Systems at Morris Elementary School Video, Why You Should Take a Music Class in Middle School Video, The Press Room on our website. We won awards of merit for Inside TSD with Dr. Macheski, his podcast, TSD Weekly Newsletter, Magic of Light at Hamilton Video, Why Flexible Seating Video. And we also won the award of honorable mention for the Troy School District newspaper that is mailed to homes three or four times a year, Inside the Troy Times. So the team received the awards this summer. Here is sort of a picture, so you guys can see them all, our wonderful awards.
Look at the certificates.
And they are hanging in the hallway on the way to the studio, so if you stop down in the hallway, you'll see some of the awards. And next month, we'll actually be talking about some more awards, which I'm very excited about as well. So congratulations to my wonderful team. I couldn't do it without them. They're amazing. I am honored to work with each and every one of them and thankful for them. So, thank you.
Can you come say something? Adam, come on, Adam.
Thanks, Thomas. I'm just honored to be part of such a great team, to have the support of the district. And my favorite part of this job, like, today, I was at Barnard. Someday, it's always something new, and there's always something good going on, no matter where you look, and I'm just happy to be a part of sharing that story.
It's phenomenal work. I mean, the work that you all do is absolutely spectacular. It's, there's a reason why there's a stack of awards there. It's just above and beyond. I think the rest of the MASP hates us.
I was going to say, every time we go somewhere, like, we see somebody else's district videos, we're just like, oh.
Yeah.
We feel bad for you.
We like that for you, but not for us, right?
So thank you for making us proud.
For making us look so good. Yeah, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay. Next, we move to recognition for the 2025 National Merit Scholarship semifinalists. Would you like to tell us about that?
Yes, I would. So this year, more than 1 million students nationwide from over 21,000 high schools entered the National Merit Scholarship Program. However, approximately 16,000 of those seniors were selected to be semifinalists. This evening, we will be passing a resolution to commend and congratulate our 69 National Merit Scholarship semifinalists. Elise Ahmed, Nourida Albiz, Gurgia Baines, Jacob Baker, Erin Barman, David Chen, Terrence Chen, Sanvi Durvasam, Achilan Ganesh Kumar, Octavian German, Shri Ram Yashasvi Gurdugundla, Advayan Goswami, David He, Erin Jong, Lilian Jing, Sophia Calsonis, Atish Karanwal, Jeffrey Kim, Michael Lee, no, I'm sorry, Jeffrey Kim, Krish Kishore Kumar, Arjun Korakuti, Pranav Kumar, Anthony Lee, Thomas Lee, Michael Lee, Edison Lee, Helen Lee, Ethan Liu, Rishi Lokesh, Suraj Makunur, Arjun Maniam, Brenda Mao, Claire Mao, Nishka Mehta, Joseph Morelli, Vandya Nedley, Kevin Oakes, Rithi Spala, Ria Power, Rahul Perla, Elizabeth Fath, Rohit Pramod, Vishnav Ramesh, Rishabh Rao, Sri Samya Sanka, Swati Seashadri, Aditya Shah, Kalp Shah, Tanay Shah, Shamant Shastry, Benjamin Shang, Shabd Shane, Abradip Shil, Sanjay Shyamsundar, Arnav Sinha, Atrev Siriki, Parnavi Sonar, Joanne Chu, Alexander Ulrich, Aryan Wadlamudi, Vijay Vargis, Sanjeev Kumar Vijay Kumar, Aishwarya Vishwanathan, Ryan Wong, Jessica Wu, Olivia Zu, Elaine Zhang, Yu Chen Zhang, Zidong Zhao, and Angela Zhao. This is a remarkable number of semifinalists and a tribute to the staff and the parents of the Troy School District. Copies of this resolution will be presented to the students at the reception on November 7th.
Thank you. That was, that was a lot of names tacked into a tight, single-spaced area, so you did a great job there. May I have a resolution, please? Dr. Philip Hart.
Whereas, the above-mentioned 69 students earned the prestigious honor of being among those selected nationwide as this year's National Merit Scholarship semifinalists. Whereas, student achievement is honored through the National Merit Scholarship semifinalists and finalist recognition programs. And whereas, national merit students reach semifinalist status by scoring in the top 1 and 1/2% on the National Preliminary Scholastic Aptitude Test, or the PSAT, and earning comparable scores on the Scholastic Aptitude Test, or the SAT. Be it therefore resolved that the Troy School District Board of Education adopts this resolution in honor of the aforementioned Troy School District students for their selection as 2025 National Merit Scholarship semifinalists. Support.
Thank you. I have a resolution by Dr. Philip Hart, supported by Ms. Alish. Are there any comments or questions about this? Of course, I have one, which is, I looked up how many semifinalists are there in the state of Michigan. Do you know?
Oh, no.
Yeah, I was going to say, 511. So Troy represents 13.5% of all winners in the state. And if you look, so we have 69. If you look at the school systems that surround us, Birmingham, Bloomfield, Rochester Hills, most of them are in single digits, and we're sitting here with 69. So phenomenal students, phenomenal parents, phenomenal teachers. It's really exciting to see us kind of shine like that in, when we look at ourselves relative to our peers. So, anyway, that's when I found that there were 511 for the whole state and did the math and went, wow, that's, that's pretty impressive for us, so I'm so proud of our students.
I did notice there was a familiar name on that list.
Yeah.
Congratulations, Rih.
I did give her a little side eye, right? Yeah, haven't been all that. So congratulations to you, to our own semifinalist here, so. Okay, if you have no other comments or questions, all those in favor, please say yes. Yes, opposed, say no. Thank you. Resolution passes. Okay. So I don't know if we have anybody here who wants to leave. Yeah, I was going to say, so normally, we take, if we have a lot of different people running, we take a break for about two minutes here so that if people want to run away and enjoy the rest of their evening and not sit here with us, they can do that?
There's a lot of students who made signatures, maybe, for your class.
Oh, okay. Yeah, we can, we can do the signatures now. Yeah, we'll take, we'll take two minutes. If you're here for civics and you need a signature for government, come on up and we'll sign your sheets, and then we'll dive in, and we'll jump back in and get the rest done. It's a short meeting tonight.
Okay.
Okay, we're going to go ahead and plow ahead here.
Enjoy your day.
So we begin with additions and deletions. There are none this evening? Thank you. Public communication. There's none. Thank you. That takes us to the general consent agenda. The general consent agenda consists this month of, A, the minutes of the September 3rd, 2024 Board of Education workshop, B, the minutes of the September 17th, 2024 Board of Education meeting, C, the Treasures Report from August of 2024, and D, the Oakland County Special Education Parent Advisory Committee representatives, and then E, the OC-SBA Bylaws Amendment. May I have a resolution, please? Mr. Haft.
Be it therefore resolved that the Troy Board of Education takes action to approve items A, B, C, D, and E of the consent agenda.
Support.
What? All right, all right. It's kind of a breach of protocol here, but, okay, I'll allow it. That's Dr. Philip Hart, is the support, okay? And then any questions or comments from this side, and then I'll jump to you. Go ahead.
I don't remember seeing the Special Ed Parent Advisory Committee, so can, is it possible at some point to get a rundown of what that is?
Yeah, there's two members. In fact, I, he's about to talk about. Good segue. There's two members of the Parent Advisory Committee. Christine Foran is our special education supervisor for secondaries here this evening, and with her is Kate Wharton from Schroeder Elementary. She is one of our representatives. Each school district across Oakland County is expected to identify two members, and they will serve as representatives for, I think it's a two-year period. Representing the Troy School. Thank you. So we thank you for being here.
And what does this committee do?
They're, they're special, they're representatives from the districts across Oakland County to the larger parent group at Oakland Schools to help support one another in issues around special education programming and so forth.
Is this a new thing?
Oh, no, it's been, been in play.
Just haven't.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We hadn't brought, we hadn't brought this to the board in the past, but the Oakland Schools had asked that we bring this resolution forward on every Schools had asked that we bring this resolution forward on an every-two-year basis. That's a good idea. To bring, to draw attention to the fact that we do have parents that are serving in this capacity across the county and supporting our students with special needs. So again, Ms. Wharton, we thank you for that.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. That's why I was like, this looks very interesting and cool, so thank you for giving your attention.
We've had previous members serve on the council. This is the first time I've stopped at the chef's desk to grade a work.
Well, cool. Well, thank you. Yeah, your service.
And it's not just parents, it's also district employees that are part of this committee?
It's just parents.
Just parents, okay.
Okay, um, we, we need to vote on the consent agenda. All those in favor, please say yes?
Yes.
Yes, opposed, say no? Thank you. General consent agenda passes. All right, that moves us to personnel. There's none this evening? That's gotta be a first in seven months, I think. Okay, great. Uh, curriculum? There's none this evening? Amazing, okay. That takes us to business. Welcome. So you took a couple months off, and now, now we have all the stuff. Well, Mr. Trudell is, is sharing the resolution. I have just a, a slideshow that's gonna play in the background there for you, so you can see the progress that we're making on Smith Middle School since. The items he's bringing are relative to Smith Middle School for several. Oh.
It can just circle through.
It should circle, yeah. Yeah. It's gone.
Yeah, we're good.
There you go.
Okay, so as Dr. Macheski said, this, um, item on tonight's agenda is really for the approval that we had discussed at the last workshop pertaining to some, the sixth round of bids for the new Smith Middle School. Um, we had pulled the landscaping portion of the bid temporarily, um, so in the upcoming, you know, next few months, we'll, we'll try to sneak it into a workshop where we can have some board-level conversation about that. We did share the, the preliminary designs. Um, so a, a good chunk of that is kind of set in place in terms of the soil and the seed, but as we discussed at the workshop, and we did verify, there really isn't, um, a lot of irrigation, there isn't a lot of, like, high-maintenance landscaping. It's a very low-maintenance type, um, design that, that Rob and his team had worked with, um, with PEA and TNP. So, um, we'll bring that forth to the board at a future date, um, have some discussion around that, but again, we have a lot of time before we really need to, to solidify those decisions. So, um, tonight's package, though, really, we're getting into those later-tier, um, items that, you know, are, are still a ways away, but we need to set that planning phase. So, um, we have metal wall panels, painting, acoustical wall units, caseworks, food service equipment, gym equipment, bleachers, um, some structured cabling throughout the building, and then some earthwork on the outside of the building as well. So, um, total bid for tonight is $8,915,483.
Okay. I think we're being asked to consider a, a resolution to purchase a, a variety of things relating to the new Smith Middle School. May I have a resolution, please? Ms. Ane, it's all yours, go ahead.
Be it resolved that the construction of the new Smith Middle School be awarded to the following vendors. Metal walls, pan, metal wall panels, Silverline Contracting for $2,345,000. Painting, R&amp;R Painting and Home Improvement do, in, for, in the amount of $314,000. Acoustic wall units to Clark Contract Services in the amount of $374,800. Casework to Division VI Fab and Installation in the amount of $973,133. Food service equipment to Stafford Smith, Inc. in the amount of $751,821. Gymnasium equipment to C&amp;M Associates in the amount of $126,965. Gymnasium bleachers to Intercall, Inc. in the amount of $155,758. Structured cabling in the, 2 AM comm telecommunications in the amount of $263,900. Earthwork to Corus Brothers Excavating in the amount of $2,949,700. With the total contract award of $808,255,77, with an 8% contingency of $660,406, with the total of $8,915,483.
Thank you.
The front page needs to say where it's from.
Oh, I needed to say that? Oh, I'm sorry. Be therefore resolved that the bid for the construction of the new Smith Middle School, including architectural, mechanical, electrical, and civil site work be awarded as attached here to the, to-
Could've made your life easier.
-in the amount of $8,915,483. And that, this amount be approved as an expenditure of the Capital Projects Fund, Sinking Fund, and Food Service Fund.
Very good. So I have a, a resolution by Ms. Ane, supported by Mr. Hoff. Gonna quick get him in there, since he couldn't get in the previous ones, so. Okay, good. Um, are, are there any questions or comments from Mr. Trudell?
I feel like we have.
Yeah.
Okay, I think we're good there. All those in favor, please say yep. Oh, oh, you did, I'm sorry. I thought.
Just because, you know, not everybody attends the workshop, where are we in terms of the totals for Smith Middle School?
So, this is the sixth bid pack for this project. Total bid to date, including this package, would be about $53.2 million. So we're looking at just over $2 million remaining. About a million of that, 1.1 million is the landscaping portion. So we're hoping, you know, just to, to honor that original bid to that contractor, that will still award the work to them, we'll just slightly modify it, um, just to meet the desires of this board. So, um, that's the ultimate goal with that. So we'll bring that one forth. Hopefully, we can issue that contract to that bidder. And then we, we do have just some signage left. We didn't receive any bids this go-around, that qualified as an adequate bid. And then the traffic signal work still has to be designed and then bid out, too. So, in total, between landscaping and signage and the traffic signal, we're looking at about $2.2 million remaining, um, with an estimate of about $55.5 million total.
So besides the, the signage, the traffic, um, signal and landscaping, what, is there anything else that's gonna be forthcoming?
Yep, so that's just in the, the new building construction. We do have some security and technology design work to be done at a later date. That'll come out of the technology side of the budget, though, or the bond budget, rather. So, um, again, I don't know the exact budget amount for the technology piece, but typically for a new building, it could be a, a two or three million dollar type budget for that as well. Um, and then eventually, we'll get into the furniture component of the building, too.
So this is in line with the estimates for the bond?
Yeah, I think we were on the $53, $54 million estimate originally. So given that the scope had adjusted upwards a little bit in terms of square footage, I think we're doing pretty good to, to be in line with that original estimate.
Okay, great, thank you. Any other questions? Don't cut anybody else off on this. Okay, good, all right. All those in favor, please say yes?
Yes.
Yes, opposed, say no? All right, thank you, resolution passes. Okay, 8B.
So the next item on the agenda, and, and thank you for entertaining this tonight. I know it was a bit of a, a last-minute request, but we did have Leonard Elementary School. As we have gone around with each school, we've gone through all the elementaries thus far, um, our finance director and myself, where we're meeting with them on budget and building these, that kind of thing. And, um, Leonard cafeteria tables have come up, so we kind of worked through, we looked at the, the excess food service fund balance to see if we could use that as a funding source. Um, but we already have a plan set and submitted to the state of Michigan to allocate that $700,000, um, in the upcoming fiscal year. So, um, we will be putting this purchase into the bond funds. It is possible, though, if, if we don't spend that excess fund balance according to the plan, because things always change, the market, logistics, that kind of thing. So we could always move this cost into the food service fund balance if we wanted to. Um, so that, that's the, the good thing with a bond fund or a food service, uh, fund balance, where you do have that flexibility that you could move things around if you have to, just to ensure that you're fully expending those dollars. So, um, this bid was for 20 tables, um, and we cut, with cafeteria tables, it's hard to spec out a specific model and get multiple bids from a specific, you know, set of vendors. So in this case, we had gone up to the market, tried to find something comparable, um, through multiple vendors. Um, in this case, we elected to take the middle option, primarily due to the durability in the marketplace of those specific tables. And it also did meet the needs and requests of that specific building, um, just to have lower maintenance, the benches that are attached to the table, they move around a lot easier. So, uh, we were looking to, to go with Great Lakes Furniture Supplies in this case, um, just thinking longer-term that, you know, these will definitely last a lot longer, so.
Okay, great, thank you. We're being asked to purchase new cafeteria tables for Leonard Elementary. May I have a resolution, please? Mr. Hoff?
Be it therefore resolved that the purchase of cafeteria tables be awarded to Great Lakes Furniture Supply Incorporated in the amount of $48,530, and that this amount be approved as an expenditure of the 2023 bond fund.
Support?
Uh, I'm gonna go with Mr. Hoff on that one, okay? So I have, I have a resolution by Mr. Hoff, supported by Mr. Hoff. Um, are there any questions or comments on this? Go ahead, Dr. Wilson?
I just, I noticed that the, the price differential is struts for making the tables open and close, and as someone who has had to try to open and close old tables, I, I say thank you, thank you for the future parents and volunteers in those buildings. I think that's gonna be a worthy investment to make, and so that people can put them up.
Ms. Alish, go ahead.
I was just gonna make a similar comment, but just to say that the, the price difference between the least expensive and the, and the second was nominal compared to the expected lifespan of the, of the tables.
That's, yeah, when I saw that, too, I was appreciative that you were looking beyond the cheapest price, because it was about a, what, 20% differential and double the lifespan. So to get 10 more years out of it for that was, was a smart purchase.
They're used every day at lunch by a, a number of kids, so.
Yeah.
Given the volume of traffic coming through, it makes sense.
Just not to have a future board here in 10 years buying new tables. Instead, it's 20 years from now.
Yep.
That, that's significant, so. Good, any other questions for them? All right, all those in favor, please say yes?
Yes.
As opposed, say no? All right, we have new tables at Leonard.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Trudell. All right, public communication on non-agenda items? Do we have none? Is that right? That is, that's correct. Okay, all right, good. And that takes us to other. And I, I wanna start with, uh, start with the thing in the corner. We have, we have a little something for one of us tonight. Well, Dr. Philip Hart, unfortunately, was unable to be with us at our last meeting, when we had a chance to, uh, share, uh, to, to share with the community a, a number of recognition for, for board members for years of service and so forth. Uh, but since she was not able to be here, we thought we would, uh, we'd bring this beautiful rocking chair to you the next meeting. Uh, so this rocking chair is given to you, uh, to commemorate your 16 years of service on the Board of Education here in Troy. You have been a tireless advocate for students in Troy. Uh, you have served as a president for a number of years on this board with distinction. Uh, you have always, um, you have always modeled, uh, what it means to be an exceptional board member. You understand governance, you understand the importance of civic dialogue and discourse and so forth. So I know, from my perspective, having been superintendent as long as you've been on the board and, and, and here longer, I really have appreciated your, your, your service to the Board of Education. Yeah, are you gonna go rock in the chair? No, no. No, but you can do it, but you wanna say something publicly?
First of all, um, I'm, uh, very honored to have had the opportunity to serve on this board for as long as I could. This was a surprise. Unfortunately, um, I was not able to come because of a death in the family last, uh, last month. Um, so I do appreciate, uh, being, being honored, um, at this meeting. I have a new grandbaby coming, so I guess I will-
All right.
I will use that rocking chair, but, um, really, in, in all seriousness, the, the time that I have served on this board, um, has really been a labor of love. I've seen a lot of changes, um, and just great changes. You know, this has always been a good school district, um, you know, my family obviously moved here because of, because of the schools, but I have seen, you know, under the, the current leadership, um, just things get better and better, more opportunities for students, um, more collaboration, um, you know, amongst our, our staff, our community, our students. And, um, this is certainly, I think, a district that we can all be very, very proud of, and I'm honored to have, you know, been able to play a part in serving of, in the governance of this district. So, thank you very much.
So that moves us over to our student reps. Um, Diana, would you like to start us off?
Yeah, I can. Good evening, everyone. I'm excited to share some updates from the Athens High School community. So first, our juniors took the PSAT slash NMSQT today. Um, this test not only serves as a valuable practice for the SAT, but it also qualifies students in the Troy School District for the National Merit Program. Last year, our senior class had nine National Merit semifinalists and 10 commended students. Academically, we are proud to announce that we have achieved the AP Honor Roll with Gold Distinction, reflecting our commitment to academic excellence. In addition, I want to highlight the success of our Athens families. Tonight, over 70 families participated in our Athens Family University, where school administration connected with families to discuss essential systems in our school. On the athletic front, our girls varsity golf team has secured the OAA White League Championship, and the girls volleyball team is currently first place in their league. So congratulations to all of our athletes. And as many of you know, Charity Week is approaching, and we are beginning to choose a charity to support. Um, last year, we raised $160,000 for Charity Week, which was matched by another organization, bringing the total to $333,000, and we are looking forward to matching the success this year. Speaking on school spirit, during Homecoming Week, we hosted the Powderpuff Game, and the juniors did win, although the seniors did work really hard. We also had our annual pep assembly and parade, followed by the Hollywood-themed school dance.
Great. Um, I've got a question for you, is, are, for Charity Week, are the applications still open, or are the-
Yeah, they're still open.
Okay, all right. I've got a horse in this race, so I want to-
For two weeks. Yeah.
I'll poke that person to make sure that they, they were, they've been waiting, they've been checking the, the website, so I'm glad that's still open. Good, any other questions for Athens? Okay. Maddie Miller?
Okay.
Welcome. Again, thank you for substituting in for Adam.
Thank you, sorry. Okay. Um, hi, everyone. I hope everyone's having a good evening. I'm here to share updates on what is happening at Troy High. So, October 11th, we hosted our annual trunk-or-treat. We had over 100 participating trunks. We broke our school's record this year. We had 500 community members roughly attending and contributing $2,000 to Activist Week in February. And Activist Week for us is in February, so to get a head start in October is a really big deal for us. We're so glad to get a head start on fundraising for the charity this, choice this year. We are currently hearing from a nonprofit groups representing in our leadership class and our student leadership program. We will begin reviewing to make the final decision on our annual Charity Week. So for Homecoming, we had our parade. Um, 50 school groups of administration and some of Troy's very own school board, as well as Mr. Mayor Ethan Baker. Um, for the game, the Troy Colts team led by Coach Chris Frazier and the quarterback Noah Rory defeated Oak Park. For the dance, we had 1,400 students attending. We had very fun activities for them at the dance. Athens Spirit Week, we are bringing it back this year. And this game is actually this Friday, when Athens plays Troy High, and we have a tailgate prior to the game, and students and staff are amping up school spirit throughout the week. For fall sports this year, boys soccer led the Troy Colts to another OA, double-A Red League Championship, and defeated Southfield A&amp;T on Friday in the district quarterfinals, and defeated Seahom on Monday in the semifinals. The Colts are on the district final game Friday against Berkeley. Girls golf and boys tennis will be competing in Grand Rapids at the state finals. For leadership, which is why I'm here today, because Adam is gone, they have selected a handful of students to go and represent Troy in Orlando. So they're currently in Disney right now, um, enjoying the nice weather. They have a leadership program there where they will be learning a ton of new things. And then for our construction in our school right now, there are a lot of renovations going down in the parking lot, and the dropping of the- And the dropping of the infamous black tarp used to cover the fences has finally given students and staff a sneak peek of what's happening, and it looks really good, so.
Oh, good.
But yes, that's all.
All right, great, thank you. Any questions for Troy High? Okay. We will move to, oh, let's go to Narada next. Hi there.
Good evening, everyone. I hope you are all having a terrific Tuesday. It has been a very busy month at IAE's with club activities and major events. After tryouts at the end of September, the month started off with our Indian American Student Association announcing the dancers who have been selected for this year's culture show that will take place on January 25th. The show was created three years ago with the purpose of celebrating all of the beautiful diversity at our school. And it has grown from showcasing four cultures to eight cultures with over 1,000 attendees. This year's performances will include a Filipino dance, South Indian dance, and Afrobeat, surely making it an unbeatable event. Last Tuesday was the 12th annual IAE's Powderpuff Football Game. After two months of practice, both grades put up a valiant effort and left it all on the field. But as I had predicted, the seniors came out on top with a 38 to 26 victory.
Oh, wow.
Last week was also our Olympics week, featuring the spirit days of dress to unimpress, which high schoolers can be very good at. Wacky Wednesday and Tropical Thursday. On Friday, all of our social houses competed in strategic, creative, and athletic events for the Phoenix Cup, which House Somnibus ended up winning, giving them two back-to-back Fall Olympics championships. House Somnibus is one of the six social houses that we have at IAE, which are very similar to the Harry Potter houses. But don't worry, there isn't any sorcery happening at our school, only a whole lot of magic and mystical intergrade bonding. Last but not least, our juniors took the PSAT earlier today. This year, IAE had 19 national merit semifinalists, and we are very excited to see how our current juniors will score. And that is all I have with current news from IAE's. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for IAE's?
Did you play the Powderpuff game, I guess?
I did, I was our quarterback.
That's why, of course she was, that's why she predicted it, right? There you go. Very good, okay. And Christian, tell us what's going on over at TCC.
All right. This past month at TCC, we started by celebrating our first Spirit Week of the year, which featured Main Character Monday, Twin Tuesday, White Lie Wednesday, Throwback Thursday, and Freaky Friday. We also celebrated Principal's Month by decorating Ms. Malanov's desk with treats and thank you letters for all the kind things she does, she does for us. Sorry. In careers, we had two former students come in and talk about how to maybe pick a career you may want to pursue, or pick a college you may want to attend in the future to pursue that career. They went over all types of things. One is at Central, one is at Alma right now. Further in careers, they're getting, we are getting ready to do our mock job interviews with Ms. Clifford, Ms., Mr. Kravakow, and Mr. Van Anderson. On maybe a little bit more fun, we, in Music Tech, Mr. Greenwood and Mr. Van Anderson are helping the students make their first and finish their first class song. Students also got to attend homecoming at both Troy High and Athens, even though they are technically home at our, at TCC. Also, they cheered there, which is cool. We have Spook Fest coming up, which is something we have not had a name for before this year, but now we do have a name for it. So we'll have a movie room, a game room, and a costume contest all throughout during the day. We were also fortunate enough to have two field trips this month, that being Sinorama Manufacturing Day, which students got to learn about sign design and further just design in general, and also got a guaranteed interview for the future. And the second field trip was to Schools to Tools, which focused on construction, carpentry, framing, and framing. We also have Career Quest upcoming November 2. Thank you for listening to what has been going on at TCC this past month.
Great, thank you. Any questions for Christian? Did you go on the Sinorama?
I did not.
You did not, okay.
No, I should have.
Did you do the other one?
No.
Oh, well, then I can't ask any questions about how it went, then, okay.
That's the reason is it's, we have to meet a certain, you know, amount of kids for us to actually have the field trip. But also, we don't want to take kids that aren't gonna actually, that aren't searching for a career path, or don't already have something picked out, or won't necessarily.
No, I understand. I just, if you'd gone, I was curious to see what that experience was like. Did you talk to anybody when they came back?
Yes.
And did they think the field trips were worthwhile?
Yes, yeah. A lot of kids, like, are made connections and all that, like, the guaranteed interview in the future is like, really, you know, that made me go, man, maybe I should have gone.
Yeah.
That's really cool. But yeah, a lot of kids had a good time and got to learn more about maybe what they would wish to pursue.
Okay.
Along with, you know, that further in careers, kind of giving everyone an idea of the direction they want to head in.
Okay, thanks, Christian. Okay, that takes us to other, other. So Dr. Wilson.
Good luck to all the kids who took the PSAT today to our future national merit finalists. I know it's a stressful starting process. But a couple of just kind of announcements for the good of the community. One is October is Free College Application Month. So if you are a senior and are interested in going to college, this is a great opportunity to save some money as you fill out those applications. So just want to make sure that families are aware of that. And then I had had a note about Charity Week applications, but I know that you mentioned that. But also Shrek the Musical will be at Athens before our next board meeting. And then I think White Christmas is in between the November and December meeting. But just to help people know that there are fun events that you can go to, whether it be a football game or a theater show.
All right, great, thank you. Dr. Philphart?
You know, Christian's mention of the Sinorama event kind of brought to mind, you know, really kudos to this Business Council and Business Roundtable that actually I think got resurrected last year. And I really want to give a shout out to, you know, community business owner Doug Teetz for his leadership, you know, working with Kendra, working with Dr. Macheski, because it started out as kind of a small group of businesses in the roundtable that, you know, essentially created this Career Accelerator Program. So the pre-internship that we had, I don't know, 30-some students participate in, and, you know, the, we learned a lot and will continue to make that program successful. But then there was more business interest, and that culminated into, you know, the Business Council, where really any business is invited to attend. And we had a great meeting, I know Nicole was at that as well, where I think there was 30-some people from different businesses. And the great thing is every time businesses show up, we ask them how they want to engage with the district. And so there were several new businesses that showed up that, you know, expressed interest in sponsoring students for the Career Accelerator Program so that we have more opportunities for students. You know, they've offered to host different events. You know, the gentleman from Sinorama, very, very passionate about wanting, you know, really to interest kids. He told his story about, you know, he sort of, he never planned on being in the sign business. And actually, the sign business is pretty techno, I mean, you need to have technical skills in that business. And he's very, very passionate about wanting to show, you know, the young people in our community that there are lots of jobs that maybe they don't think about or aren't exposed to. And that particularly for kids that might want to stay in southeast Michigan, there are plenty of employment opportunities. So I am, I'm just, I couldn't be more thrilled at the level of participation that we're getting from local businesses, because they see our district as a great opportunity to develop relationships with young people, you know, for a future workforce for them. And there are a lot of great companies, everything from, you know, engineering companies to banking, to insurance, to retail. I mean, we've got a great variety of companies that are in this community and that are very, very interested in making sure that our schools are great and that they are providing opportunities for our students to get hands-on work experience.
Great, thank you.
I'm all set today, I think everybody went over, because I was going to, so.
Okay, stole your answers. Okay.
I have a couple. This Friday is the Athens Troy High Football Game. I'm a little torn, I went to Athens, but my kid now goes to Troy High, so. I did want to, I know that it was in the Troy Times, but Hamilton Elementary was recognized as a national blue ribbon school, so I wanted to bring that up. And then I do want to remind people that it is an election year and to flip the ballot. There's two really important things related to the school board on this year's ballot. There's a millage renewal, and that renewal goes directly to the district's general fund, which includes things like teacher salaries. So there's the millage renewal on the back of the ballot, and there is a school board race. So make sure to flip that ballot over and vote in those two very important sections.
Great. Mr. Hoff?
Mrs. Alish alluded and spoke about the national blue ribbon from Hamilton. That is the apex of what a school district is all about, when we can recognize the hard achievement work from our staff and central office that, and the teachers, of course, that work very hard at producing and inspiring and motivating children to achieve their best. And it comes out that our district once again comes out on top. So congratulations to Dr. Decker, Mr., or Dr. Macheski, and to the entire staff that has made that possible.
Great. Sunny?
Okay, everybody pretty much mentioned everything I was gonna say. The only thing that's remaining is I do want to wish our community who celebrates, Navratri, who just celebrated the Indian Festival for the nine days, the, it's to represent the special, of the feminine power is basically the last nine days. And then Diwali is coming up in another two weeks on November 1st. Wish everybody happy Diwali before our next meeting.
Great, thank you. Dr. Macheski?
Yeah, just fall updates are underway. Look forward to coming to staff as well as PTO meetings soon. We've done a couple of them already, and we've got several more this week. And next couple of weeks are chock full of opportunities to talk to staff, talk to our community about really important initiatives, many of which have already been mentioned this evening, the millage, bond updates. I'll talk a little bit about budget, kind of where we are with respect to that, and give an update on our website. So looking forward to being at staff and PTO meetings, booster meetings in the near future. The coffee with superintendent regularly. I have opportunities, if the community is interested, to join us. Well, 7:00 at central office at the administration building this Thursday. So 7:00 this Thursday, administration building. Coffee with the superintendent, if anyone is interested in sitting down. Probably going to review that fall update and talk a little bit more in depth, answer questions that anyone might have with respect to that. And that's it.
Okay. But coffee, speaking of coffee, coffee with the board last week, for those that weren't there. Small, small group, I think we had five people total, four people. But, you know, the, that was our second time doing that, and that's probably about what you had, I think, in the spring.
About seven, that's it.
And, you know, you, I look at those, at first you go, why do we do this? There's only a couple of people, but the conversations are quality. It's, it's good to have, sometimes it's nice that it's a small group, and usually there's, we had a father there with a second grader, Hamilton, who had some really good questions and was curious about other things coming on, going on in the district later on in his child's life. So I thought it, I think we should probably keep doing these. They, it's probably worthwhile to keep going. MASB conference is next week. Who, Nicole and I are presenting, I think, is it Saturday or Friday that we're presenting?
Saturday.
Saturday, we're presenting. And then, yeah, who else is going and when, just so I know? Oh, we've got everybody going.
Okay, so the rest of us.
Is, and then who are our delegates? I think I am, okay.
He's the main delegate.
Okay, all right, well, we'll see y'all there in Lansing. And then the last thing, it's been brought up already, but I just want to emphasize again, the millage renewal on the ballot. Regardless of who you vote for, for the Board of Education, vote yes for the millage renewal. It represents a third of our operating expenses, and it is the biggest, ugliest proposal I've ever seen on a ballot. It's confusing, it doesn't make any sense. Just know that it is not an increase, it is a renewal. And it's written so that we can, we can sustain ourselves for 20 years. Because we're tired of going to the ballot box asking for you to say yes all the times. We're like, what's the longest period of time we can ask our taxpayers to, our voters to say yes? And the answer was 20. So this one, we can, if you vote yes, we promise we won't ask you for another renewal for 20 years. How's that for a promise? So please, please, if you can, we would appreciate that support. And I think that's it. So we just have our, there we go, thank you. The 12th of November, because the election day is the 5th, we actually move our workshop the following week. So our workshop is November 12th in the administration building. And then we'll be back here on the 19th of November for our regular meeting at 7:00 here. Okay? And with that, did I miss anything? Are we class dismissed? Okay, great, thank you all.